We're going to call meeting to order.
Thank you.
I agree.
Our apologies for being late. Let's begin with the call to order in the roll call. We met in closed session. We have a quorum, so we can move on to the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
First up is the approval of the minutes. So I would move the approval of the minutes.
Sorry. Second.
Julia moves. Teri seconds.
I.
Karen Kamisich.
I.
Rick Pavanato.
I.
Deb Boyle.
I.
Mike Davenport.
I.
Nancy Kupka.
I. Thank you. We'll move now to the reception of visitors. This first reception of visitors is for anybody who'd like to talk to the board about anything being voted on tonight. Okay, hearing nothing, we'll go on to the recommendation and reports of the superintendent. Dr. McDonald.
Thank you, Dr. Kupka. We have several reports tonight about, actually mandated reports and plans. The first report is about the school report card information. This year, as the board is aware, there's a change in the school report card as mandated by law. We have the traditional school report card, and now we have the E-school report card, which frankly, we don't really have a copy of yet, but we're told it will go online, I believe, at the end of the month. Historically, report card information includes both student achievement data and a lot of different demographic data about the school district. The new report card also includes data about courses, opportunities, athletic programs, awards, and so forth, and so that should be of value to people who are looking at the district from the website. We always have, at this point in the year, a report about the school report cards. Since we did do a detailed report about student achievement at the October workshop, we're not really going to spend time on that tonight. We're going to focus more on that demographic information, other information important to the district, and some of the information will be on the new E-report card. We've asked the two high school principals to make these reports, and Mr. Bill will go first and talk about, or, excuse me. You're going to go first, Mrs. Accardi. Thank you. And then, Mr. Bill?
Mr. Casey.
Mr. Casey.
Mr. Bill is not going to talk.
He goes last. Okay? Good to know. Go ahead, Mrs. Accardi. It's already a disaster.
So as Dr. McDonald said, the state is providing not only the traditional report cards, which always have that outline of the state, 2013, two school districts, and a district report card, but now there's this new E-report card that will be available for, really, the public to log in and view. Both sets, whether you're talking about these report cards that we've received every year for the last, I don't know, 10, 15 years or so, along with the E-report card, will not be made available until October 31st. They basically say "on" or "before" October 31st. So what you have in the board agenda is the preliminary copy, which school districts can see and we can report out about. Much of what we'll talk about today will be the new E-report card, because as Dr. McDonald said, that's really what's different this year. But the district report card, I want to mention a few things about that, so you're aware of what that'll look like. Of course, it always looks at the same types of information, so there's student demographic information, it'll talk about instructional setting in terms of class size, school district finances, academic performance, which we reported on already, performance on state assessments, which we reported on already, AYP, and then our status. In terms of demographic composition, you'll notice that our numbers really haven't changed much in a year. This information, by the way, will be available on both the hard copy report cards and also on that E-report card. The demographic data for the E-report cards, though, is by school. The demographic composition that I'm showing you up here is for the district. And you'll notice, as I said, there's really not much change, very minimal changes in just a few areas. In addition, some of the information that's in the traditional district report card will also be available through this new school E-report card, but not necessarily to the same degree. So for example, you'll see here it talks about the four-year and five-year graduation rates. The four-year is what they're telling us will be made available in the E-report card. You'll notice that there are a few changes, mostly to our benefit in terms of the graduation rate, minimal differences in terms of attendance, and high school dropout rate, parent contact, and then, of course, an increase in the low income. But by and large, not substantial changes in any area, except, of course, the graduation rate, the four-year cohort, which will appear on the E-report card as well. Where I think you'll note the most drastic difference, and this is why I wanted to spend a little bit of time talking about this, is in the chronic truancy rate. The chronic truancy rate, they've changed the way they calculate it. And I went back all the way into the '90s to see how long they've been calculating it on the 10% rule, which was the 18 or more of the previous 180 school days, and it's regular school attendance days, not necessarily within the same school year. Okay? So even though all the data we're looking at is for the previous year, when they calculate chronic truancy, they're looking at it for the previous 180 school days.
Oh.
And they changed it to nine days, and that went into effect this year. The good thing is that I went back and I looked at the school report cards, and they do note it on them. So when you look back, for example, at the 2012, you'll see it'll say "calculated on 18 or more days." When you look at the 2013, you'll see it'll say nine or more. So if you read the fine print, it actually explains each section of that. But I wanted to call that to your attention, simply in case you're wondering why that rate looks so different. Surprisingly, the state rate did not change as much as I would have anticipated based upon that figure, but in District 99, it had an impact on us in terms of that rate. And that is from my contacts at the state, that is the way they will calculate it from this point forward. So it's from this year, beginning this year, and moving on in future years as well. Transitioning now to the new E-report card, it is available through the IIRC, which is a site that has been available to the community for years. It's a site you can log into and see all kinds of information about our schools. There's information, and I'll actually show you later on in the presentation how you actually can access it, but there's information in there, demographic, there's history in there in terms of test scores, it's where it housed our previous school improvement plans, it where it houses our current now Rising Star plans. So it's a site that's been around for some time. Now the state is merging and putting more information available to the public in the IIRC. These traditional report cards were only available to school districts through I-WAS, and then we had to publish them. So basically, we got them from ISB, and we published them. The benefit to the E-report card is people can log in at any time and see that information, obviously after October 31st. The other benefit to it is that it includes the school report card data, but much more. So it's a much more comprehensive view of what our schools are all about. There is not, however, a district E-report card. It's only school-based. So there's a North High School and a South High School. I did ask for copies, preview copies, so that I could share them with you, but unfortunately, not able to get them. But this is a sample of what it, ooh, excuse me, what it will look like. They're saying that it will print out in a couple of pages. You can see the top of this has some of the demographic information, talks about your low-income population, your LEP students, special education students, and then goes on to talk about your curriculum. And this is what is actually entered by the buildings. Of course, Jill Browning was very essential in helping the buildings and helping the principals through this. She spent a lot of time working on this as well. And you actually go in, there's a series of boxes you can click, and input all this type of data, hours upon hours' worth of data that you enter into the system. And you can see here, it's about what coursework, the AP courses, and so on. The second page provides you with some of the more traditional test data as well, so for example, how many students are exceeding standards, based on Prairie State for high school districts, obviously, and how many are meeting, and then it also looks at how many of the class are on track, in terms of like your freshmen that are on track. There's other information in there, including that four-year graduation cohort rate. There's also a measure in there determining how many students they believe to be college and career-ready. On the sample, they state that it's scoring at 20 or better on the ACT. However, just within the last couple of days, there has been some reason to believe they may raise that now in Illinois to 21. So until this is published, we'll have to see what the basis is. And then there's, of course, other information in there about teachers, the climate of the school, all kinds of other valuable information. And as Steve and Scott will talk about, how they're able to insert some of the awards and honors that the buildings receive, to really talk more about the culture of the school than just numbers and test data and demographics and those kinds of quantitative measures.
So as Gina had mentioned, this new report card should give parents, community members, anyone who wants to go on the site, an opportunity to get a lot of information about the school and get a nice overview of the various things that the school has to offer, both in our academic course offerings within our curriculum, also information about our athletic programs and our co-curriculars, the number of different clubs and organizations that students can join and become involved with. The different categories that you see that are on the, that will be on the E-report card, the structure they provided, we don't select the categories. Some of those categories were already populated, then we went in with help of Jill, and there's a number of checkboxes that we look to compare, for example, different courses that were listed, which ones do we offer as a school, which clubs and organizations do we have, what type of athletic programs, and so there's a menu of options under each of those larger headings that we went in and checked off in terms of which ones do we offer at North and also at South. There's also some opportunities in each of those categories for another, where we can add something that may be unique to either of our schools or unique to District 99 that we want to appear on the report card as well. Again, not seeing the actual report card, we don't know how this is going to look when a parent wants to go in and look at our 200-plus different distinct courses, but that should all be there, because each one was a different checkbox that we had to fill out indicating that we offer those courses. The same would go true with our athletic programs, listing of our co-curriculars are all there, and then, as Gina's also mentioned, there's a section for awards. And the nice thing about the awards section, if you want to go to the next slide, is these are things that you're all aware of, things that we've talked about at previous board meetings and that have been on our website, as they happen at different times during the school year. And of course, for this report card, these will be awards and achievements from the previous school year, but these happen at all different times during the school year, and we publicize them as they occur. I think the nice thing about this will be, is that someone can go in and look at North, or look at South, and see the different accomplishments and awards that took place throughout the whole course of the year. So as opposed to seeing them just, you know, at the time that they happen, this kind of gives, I think, a more holistic picture of all the accomplishments and achievements that have taken place at the school. So on the previous list and this list, these are all things that, you know, we do publicize and we're very proud of, accomplishments of our teachers, and primarily the accomplishments of, achievements of our students in, you know, the arts, academics, you know, so we have everything from students getting perfect ACT scores to recognized for artwork, speech team, different IHSA state titles, but this is all there for people to look at it at one time and see kind of collectively all the different accomplishments that have taken place during the course of the year. So I think that part is nice, because it'll give people maybe a better sense of the kind of really positive things that happened at both North and South High School. And last, but certainly not least, Steve Bill.
Glad I got it right someplace.
Well, in order not to be redundant, I think the thing to remember is that the old report card that we posted on our website only had a very brief opportunity at the end for the principals to write a letter, and we simply highlighted a few things that we wanted to, that were mostly curricular, that helped to explain some of the initiatives that were going on in our school improvement plans. This offers us quite a different opportunity. So we won't be adding that at the end of the traditional school report card. This is where we listed the things that we're proud of, that we're happy about working on, and they won't be curricular for the first time. They're going to be about the honors that students have received, the honors teachers have received, and I think this offers us quite a nice opportunity to capture, as Scott said, what happened last year in total. And because these are things you read about piecemeal on the website or in news stories, this puts it all together. And there are some things that both buildings are very proud of, we're glad to be doing that in one spot, and we think this will be a nice addition. Now, entering all this information is quite a task, so I'm going to, you know, thank Jill again for her work on this, because she did a lion's share of it. And, you know, we expect that when you go to view the report card, you're going to get quite a nice picture of, you know, what South and North represent to the community.
So either "on" or "before" October 31st, you can just click into the link that I provided, and I'm not exactly sure what it will look like, and it's top secret, so I don't know yet what it will look like, but typically, you can search by school. You can also search by district. You won't get the E-report card, you'll get other information about our district, though. But I anticipate there'll be something on here somewhere that says "new state report card access," or something along those lines. Not exactly sure, but I put the link there so that it'll be easily accessible.
Wow. Thank you very much. Questions, comments?
Just a quick question, to go back to that truancy report that you listed.
Mm-hmm.
Who decided nine was a good number?
Yeah.
Rather than 18?
Five percent instead of 10 percent?
Yeah, five percent rather than 10.
Illinois State.
Is that a big discussion, or?
Not to my understanding. I know they talked about doing it sooner than last year, because this is always a year in the rear.
Right, okay.
Why they decided to wait until the 2013, that I don't know. I think it's part of just raising standards.
Yeah, I guess that's true.
And it's nine days that are not excused for a valid reason. So if a student is hospitalized, if a student, you know, has validation from a doctor, or something along those lines, those days do not necessarily count. However, even with some days that normally might be excusable under our new school code, they're not. So I think it's about raising the bar, raising standards, and holding families and students accountable. But when you see a drastic change from 18 to nine, that raises, to me, that, it raises my attention.
Yeah, it certainly does.
As a parent, I would think that, you know, that we're talking about two weeks, right, two, you know, business weeks, as opposed to four weeks or an entire month. So if I'm a parent, I figure, wow, it's a month, my kid hasn't been there, what's going on? That might be too late, so I think they're definitely being proactive.
I think most people support it, but I think the other issue is that it's about a valid cause, without valid cause.
Yeah.
So if a student is really seriously ill, that's a valid, a valid cause.
Gina, these E-report cards are something that all the schools in the state are doing, is that correct?
The matcha stuff.
So I'm wondering, I think that this is, I agree, awesome tool for us to use to really show all in one place, a great snapshot of all the wonderful things that are happening here. I'm wondering, though, what, clearly, this is a way to standardize from one school to the next, some, in some sort of a format, how things are reported out. Wondering what, what was the motivation behind that, other than maybe just, this is a good thing to do? What does the state hope to accomplish by getting everybody to do it this way?
Well, I believe they created a system that allows some standardization, but also allows you to, to get it to serve your benefit. So for example, as we look at, page through here, all of the awards, we decided what to put on these pages. The state didn't. So it's standardized, but yet it's customizable. And so I think it's sort of the best of both worlds. This report card that we've had for years, really short of a letter that you could attach, was not customizable. It basically was all numbers and charts and graphs and pretty much test scores and attendance rates, and quite frankly, it doesn't give you, in my opinion, really any information about the culture of the state, or the culture of the district. This is about test scores, and while test scores are absolutely important, no one would argue that, I would want to know more about my child's school than just, just the test scores.
Right.
So I personally think that this is a step in the right direction. Until we actually see what it looks like, however, it's difficult to say for sure. Because I can look at the sample, anyone can go in and pull off the sample, but it's a sample. You know, and I'm interested to see what it looks like for other districts, too. You know, we chose to input this, these data points. What did other schools decide? I'm just curious to know.
Well, ultimately, that's what's going to happen, right? Is there's going to be an awful lot of comparison going on. Mr. Bill?
I mean, I would add, it's a puppet relationship going for each district.
Sure. Yes, absolutely.
Because we're looking for a snapshot they can share with clients. We're looking for homes, and so this is a nice opportunity for us to emphasize what we're all about, rather than just a number.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Very good.
Moving on, district improvement plan?
Back to Mrs. Accardi, and I think I can't mess this up, because she's the only one making it.
Okay. Okay. The district improvement plan is basically a plan that is a continuous plan. It used to be that the district improvement plan, along with the school improvement plans, were due every two years for schools that were not making adequate yearly progress. That changed when the state adopted a system known as Rising Star. The Rising Star system, we used last year. So last year, Dr. Minor presented about the district improvement plan using Rising Star. Again, it's a one-year, and it's continuous. So even as we are working through the plan, we're tweaking it, we're making changes, we're putting in, we're aligning different goals, we're changing some of our measurements as we work through the process. So I think what's really important to understand about this newer process is that it is a continuous model, and it is based on a series of indicators. Those indicators fall into several different areas: district vision and direction, district and school improvement processes, district allocation of resources, district support for school improvement, and teacher and leader effectiveness. And so within those five different categories, there's a total of 50 indicators. There's more, by the way, at the school level, which you'll hear about next month. Of those 50, schools are not, districts are not required to assess all of them. We are required annually to assess, and there's all these different types, a couple of sets of them, the Smart Start and Smart Plan, they're called. And I met with several members of the administration in both buildings, and we worked through assessing every, all of the required indicators. We even assessed more than the required indicators. And when you assess them, you have to determine whether or not they are already fully implemented, partially implemented, or not implemented at all, and what priority they are for you. So are they highest priority, the lowest, or somewhere in between? After we assess the indicators, we, of course, used our district goals, coming from the strategic plan, to determine where that alignment occurs. And we're in a really good situation in District 99, because we have district goals. We have goals that are reviewed quarterly, we have goals that are established yearly, we have a strategic plan for the district. So it really makes this a very easy endeavor. When you look at these, and I just created these couple of charts, just to give you a sense, rather than printing out the 62-page document that I believe I brought with me, so if anyone wants to see that, I have it, but I thought it would be easier to understand in the chart form. And basically, what I did was align them to the district goals and the measurements that we're using. So as we're going through the process of periodically, probably bimonthly minimally, if not more often, looking back to see at our progress on these goals, we know what the measurements are. So for example, and I'll just go through a couple of them, the first objective is about the schools in the district setting achievement targets for all subgroups, and all AYP subgroups. But really, if you read on more throughout the Rising Star program, it actually goes on to talk about how that's the minimal expectation. The district should be looking at other indicators, and it gives several examples. So the examples that resonate with me, that are not necessarily listed there, but it talks about local indicators, are, for example, AP scores, performance series test scores, those kinds of grade indicators, student achievement indicators that you can look at. For example, it even talks about how Title I schools should look at multiple measures, and not simply whether or not a school made AYP and how the subgroups did on state testing. So that obviously aligns to us encouraging rigorous coursework at all levels, advanced placement and honors courses. It also talks about literacy and increasing reading achievement, as we use performance series as one of our measures, and then, of course, creating a process of review, of systematic data and qualitative, quantitative data analysis. And so those align, and then some of the measurements as well. So just to kind of take you through it, we are always looking at data. I presented some data last, you know, the last couple of board meetings, and this data is disseminated out to the schools. Again, they're looking at the data, so that aligns with our second objective. Hang on, I'm losing my cursor here. And then, of course, our third objective here is about training on how to use data. One of the focal points of Rising Star is about data-driven decision-making. It's about using data to make programmatic changes and adopting new programs. So one of the things that's really important about determining whether or not your programs are effective is how you use the data to determine, not just in the moment, but over time. And so what, the third objective there is about how you use that data to do just that. The fourth objective is, even though it talks about a, simply a curriculum, it doesn't give a lot of elaboration there, as you page through some of the information that's available through Rising Star, it refers back to having students meet standards, and so that relates, of course, to our AVID program, and having students who are college and career-ready. It also talks about rigorous coursework, and making sure that all students, you know, meet the, basically, the Common Core standards now in Illinois. And then our fifth objective, while it talks about a district curriculum guide, it actually gives subcategories, and it refers specifically to writing throughout the curriculum. So of course, that relates to our ELA standards, and we're working on writing this year, in fact. We just had a group of almost 30 teachers meet last week and begin working on the ninth through 11th grade standards. And then it specifically mentions Common Core math and next-generation science standards. So of course, that matches nicely with our district goals, as we're adopting Common Core and moving into 21st century learning.
I'd like to acknowledge the fact that what Mrs. Accardi and her colleagues came up with is very good, but because basically, it integrates what we're already working on, so we're not doing parallel things, which wastes time and which we do not have the resources to do. So one of the goals has been to try to take any of these requirements or expectations or directives from different regulatory agencies of the government that wants us to do change and try to integrate them with things that we already think are important to do.
Absolutely. And in fact, the Do Page ROE has been using the documents from last year as samples. When I presented back in November and attended some meetings, shared those out, and they've been using, trying to get school districts to look at how you take those Rising Star indicators and align them to your plan, so you're not working on, you know, two tracks at one time.
Yeah.
The second document, I'm certainly not going to read to you. I just wanted to give you, it's a lot, I know. I wanted to give you a sense of, not only do we have these goals, and not only do they align to the district goals, which align to the strategic plan, and not only do we already have measures in place, but we also, in creating the plan, have outlined a series of activities and tasks that need to occur to move us towards the goals. Certainly did not list all of them, but to give you an example. So for Objective 4, one of our goals is, or one of our fully implementation of the goal would be to, oh. fully implementation of the goal would be to, oh, sorry, would be to enroll a second year AVID freshman class next year. So just last Thursday, we had a meeting, we invited the feeder school principals, counselors to attend, we had most, we had quite a few in attendance, we talked about the program, we had a couple of videos, we were able to show their students answering interview-type questions, we were able to talk about the selection process from last year, how that will change for next year. While I didn't necessarily list that specific step, that relates to AVID enrollment process review and implementation. So I just tried to give you the big ideas here, so as not to create another 62-page document, but just to give you a sense that, how we're working through those. And the nice thing about Rising Star is that you go in and you basically check off what you've done and you take notes. So there's a history. So I can see everything we did last year, I was part of it last year, so I had actually entered some of that. But anyone who steps into a position, just as my leaving South High, I did this last year for South High, they can log in and see exactly what we did last year. All the notes are there, all the meeting notes, agendas, so on and so forth. So the other nice thing about doing it this way, as opposed to our old E-Plan, there was just the plan. It was a document that sat out there, and it was just a stagnant backman. This is a continuous model that allows us to see exactly what's been done. You can print a series of reports to see what percentage you are towards your goal. You can insert new things as you realize, oh, this is a step we really need to do, you can add new tasks. So it's a pretty elaborate system. So I just tried here, the reason I share this, I know these charts look a little complicated, but I just tried to give you a sense of what are some of the things that we're working on, so that you have a sense of how we plan to accomplish those goals.
My goodness.
Very good.
Well, I'll start. Very nicely done, thank you very much. This is very helpful. And I've said it before, I'm going to say it again, sometimes I think what I hear at these meetings is sometimes better than what I hear at IASB. And I think you should think about submitting something like this next year for a presentation.
Presenting, yeah, absolutely.
You've been presenting on other topics in other venues, but maybe the Triple I would be a good place.
Thank you.
Very good.
Any other questions or comments?
This is really.
I'm just really, really proud of what we're doing here. And fair to say that every school in the state, with the exception of a couple, maybe, have to have a District Improvement Plan, correct? And so when we talk about schools not meeting annual AYP, we're talking about every school in the state. And this is something that we've had, we've been tasked with for several years, and we continue to improve, even though we're not meeting the really unrealistic, unattainable standard. But we continue to improve, we continue to improve across our subgroups, and it's because of this sort of great plan that we have in place and these initiatives that we have. So thank you very, very much.
That's really, it's impressive, for sure.
Moving on, Freedom of Information requests?
Okay, Dr. Kupka, we received two Freedom of Information requests in the past month, both were denied. The first-
I don't think there were any this month.
No.
Yeah, they were both denied, according to-
There's a note here.
Yeah.
There were.
They were both denied. The first requested personal information about our students, which we did not believe we should share. The second requested information about contracts we don't have. So both were denied.
Moving on to the consent agenda, is there any item, any member of the board wishes to talk about a little bit further? Hearing none, do we have a motion?
I'll move the approval of the consent agenda. I guess I have to name them, right? The consent agenda, which includes the personnel report, the financial pages, the school library grant, the student tour, the 2013-14 application for recognition of schools, and the deletion of certain policies.
I'll second.
Julia, motions, Mike seconds, thank you. Joanne?
Julia Beckman?
Aye.
Mike Deppport?
Aye.
Aye.
Jeri Pavicich?
Aye.
Rick Pavanato?
Aye.
Deb Boyle?
Aye.
Nancy Kupka?
Aye.
Moving on to the district goals?
Speaking of goals.
The recommendations for action, shared the 2013-14 or a draft of the 2014 district goals with the board several times. We've done some work editing those after the September business meeting. Reviewed some of the changes made at the workshop. We provided those to you with, was it red line or some other color?
Yellow.
Yellow.
Yellow line. And I'm presuming that the board is satisfied with them at this time, and ergo, we are recommending they be approved, so we begin working on them. As, in effect, we have been working on them, but we would like to officially begin working on them.
Any discussion?
Got to make a motion first.
Make a motion.
So moved that we accept the district goals for 13-14.
I'll second.
Okay. Teri moves, Mike seconds?
Now we can discuss.
Now we can discuss.
Teri Pavicich?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
I don't think there's any discussion.
We've already talked about them all.
Nicely done. That's okay. Teri Pavicich?
Aye.
Mike Deppport?
Aye.
Keith Mattoon?
Aye.
Rick Pavanato?
Aye.
Julia Beckman?
Aye.
Deb Boyle?
Aye.
Nancy Kupka?
Aye.
Okay. Approval of District Improvement Plan?
This is formal approval of the plan that Mrs. Akardi just presented.
I'd like to move that we accept the District Improvement Plan as presented this evening.
I'll second.
Mike moves, Deb seconds.
Mike Deppport?
Aye.
Deb Boyle?
Aye.
Keith Mattoon?
Aye.
Teri Pavicich?
Aye.
Rick Pavanato?
Aye.
Julia Beckman?
Aye.
Nancy Kupka?
Aye.
What bids for the transition house?
Okay, we've been busy working on the transition house or the property for the transition program, and we have several bids to bring before the board tonight. Mr. Colajay is going to make a brief report.
I'll start with getting you an update on the current construction, we're a month into it. We're on schedule, still looking for January 21st as projected move-in, construction to end near the end of December, and then the move-in in May. Also want to talk briefly on budget, including the Phase Two, we'll call it, which are the bids that I'll be presenting tonight. Construction costs, we're still within the budget for the whole project. We have roughly $50,000 remaining contingency for the project, and that funding will also be used for the landscaping that we'll come back in the spring with when we finish. Couple notes, earlier, when we presented the first round of Phase One bids for the transition house, we had alternate bids, and early in the project, we didn't think we'd have the budget to get the fourth classroom, the shower area, faculty bathroom, and the site work. So I'm happy to say that we're getting all this work done this year, and we want to come back to it in the future, we can get everything done, and just the landscaping in the spring. So everything's going well and on schedule.
That's great.
That said, for Phase Two, the site plan, we, construction documents were developed. We had three prime contracts, five proposals were submitted. We're familiar with all these bidders, they've performed, worked here in the district before. This work includes asphalt parking area, drop-off area, curbing and sidewalk, the soil mitigation, we'll take care of that, too, and a new fence on the north side and also around the dumpster. And then, like I said, we'll come back in the spring with the landscaping. So with the three bidders, we are, Board of Education, to approve the awards for the total amount of $146,896.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
I have one question. You mentioned the soil mitigation, I understood it wasn't going to have to be too, a lot of mitigation?
High levels of, I'll say it right, chromium, it's a substantial amount back there in the back where the well was.
Oh.
That's included in the asphalt bid, so we'll be doing that and taking it off the site.
Oh, man, okay.
So a good amount.
Good to know.
And asphalt plants won't be open for too much longer, so.
We plan on getting this work done before Thanksgiving.
Ah.
Great.
Right, thanks.
Any other discussion? We have a motion, we have a second?
Teri Pavicich?
Aye.
Mike Deppport?
Aye.
Keith Mattoon?
Aye.
Rick Pavanato?
Aye.
Julia Beckman?
Aye.
Deb Boyle?
Aye.
Nancy Kupka?
Aye.
That is good student discipline.
We're recommending the board approve the recommendation from the administration regarding the student discipline issue that the board discussed in close session.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I would make the motion that we accept the recommendation of the administrative staff for the student discipline case.
Thank you, Ms. Boyle. Second?
I'll second that.
Julia, seconds, thank you.
Deb Boyle?
Aye.
Julia Beckman?
Aye.
Mike Deppport?
Aye.
Keith Mattoon?
Aye.
Teri Pavicich?
Aye.
Rick Pavanato?
Aye.
Nancy Kupka?
Aye.
Policy Committee Report, second reading?
Well, everything that we have on the agenda for second reading are things that have been reviewed before, and Policy Committee recommends approval as presented here.
Is there any discussion or questions? Mike is moved.
I do move that we accept, accept the policies for, for second reading, 2.105, 2.120, 5.290, 5.300, 5.320, and 7.340.
And I'll second that.
Rick seconds?
Mike Deppport?
Aye.
Rick Pavanato?
Aye.
Julia Beckman?
Aye.
Deb Boyle?
Aye.
Keith Mattoon?
Aye.
Teri Pavicich?
Aye.
Nancy Kupka?
Aye.
Moving on to new business, Policy Committee Report, first reading?
First reading, everything that you're seeing here, pretty much alignment with ISB recommendations. We've met and had discussion about each of these, had a good meeting, and went over several comments, concerns, and what you see here are what we recommend that we approve. So we'd be happy to answer any questions that the board might have regarding these policies.
Questions or discussions?
Just one question, just to curiosity, regarding 5.270, the employment at will?
Yep.
We've been, that issue has been around for years, did the IASB just decide? Is this a recent policy recommendation, do you know, or?
Actually, I-
It's not that we've had a policy, but I know within Illinois, it's been-
Right, this has been the last, this came out of the 2010, and this is what's current recommended from them. We had some discussion about what is and, who is an at-will employee, and so I, in your board packet, you saw some information about that, and that was born from our discussion in our Policy Committee meeting.
I was just curious.
Your attorneys do recommend we approve-
They do.
-policy as written.
I can understand that, but I was just curious as to whether someone had brought it up at the state level. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay.
So if, we'll move it to, of course, anybody has any comments or suggestions about this, if they let us know between now and the second reading, and then we'll bring forward at the next meeting these for a second reading, hopefully for your approval.
IASB report?
Well, you all got these nice big packets right here, and Joanne was nice enough to actually include them in your board docs as well. As you know, this is a report that's going to actually be acted upon at the IASB convention at the delegate meeting, of which I am your voting member here. So I guess I had asked you all before, just to take a look at this, I know it's a lengthy document, I didn't expect all of you to go through it like fine-tooth comb, that was sort of my job to do. Of course, lest you have some, you know, some questions about it. It's a pretty important function at the IASB conference, because this is something that we are all a member of, and we're giving direction to the IASB as far as how we stand on certain circumstances. I did go through this, there are 22 people that are a part of this resolution committee, so of course, they've also gone through these things with a fine-tooth comb. There were 15 new resolutions, eight of them were supported that came forth by the resolution committee, and seven were not supported. I would not like really to give too much attention to the ones that they didn't support, I think that they definitely had great rationale. The ones that they supported, of course, would be new, and they, you know, besides the 15 new ones, we already have 135 that were previously voted on over the years, that's how many, you know, that they have in here. So just looking at the new ones, I don't know if you want to take the time to do that now, or if you want to get back to me on the ones that are supported, if, I mean, I can go through them, I've read them, if you want me to make a summary of any particular one, I can.
Generally, do you agree?
I do.
With their recommendations?
Yes, I do. And a couple of them, they were actually really good ones, and they combined a couple of them to make one formal one, which was really good. There was a lot, few of them that were on charter schools, three of them were on charter schools.
Notice that, yeah.
And the financing of the charter schools. And a couple of them were further clarification of things that we already do in the district concerning things like PE and what could be PE exemptions, along those type of lines. So, yes, so there's a little bit of time, we even have one more business meeting before the actual convention, so if anybody wants to, you know, look over that and then let me know if you disagree with any of the ones that they support.
Deb, what would be your timeline that you would need to hear back by?
Well, I would have to know is how you would want me to vote on it, and we would have to agree as a board, we'd have to discuss that, and when we would have, we don't have to be nuts, but if there were four of us that really wanted, you'd send me in there as a delegate to raise my hand and say why we, as a group from District 99, would disagree with that resolution going forward. I can tell you, after being the delegate for several years, there are many districts that do, but I can also tell you that I have not seen one that has upturned what the resolution committee has done, although there have been a couple that have come kind of close. There really have been, things, especially transportation and some, maybe some smaller, some things that might affect a smaller school, or maybe a grade school versus a high school, that type of thing, so, kind of interesting.
But there isn't anything that you're concerned about?
There isn't, no, I read through each and every one of them, I see their rationale for it, and I actually agree with the recommendations that they made. But that might, you know, I'm reading, and sometimes, you know, when you're doing that, sometimes you buy in to, so that's why it's always good to have another set of, you know, eyes on this, too. So if you, you just want to just look at the ones that they are supporting especially, because those are the ones that you're looking at being adopted. So if you don't agree with those, then let me know, and we can talk about them, and I can go in and raise our concerns.
Okay. We would have to know within a week, or, because we would have to have a special board meeting if we wanted to discuss anything.
We'd have to have a special meeting, we could do it at the workshop.
We could do it at the workshop.
Okay.
We could put that on the agenda, then, for the workshop.
Right, if there was any concerns. And feel free to call me, you know, so we have, you know, and I can bring it up and send, you know, something to Dr. McDonald that he can disseminate out to you, you can think about it if somebody has a question or concern. Okay? Thank you.
Thanks, Deb, turbulent times to be the-
[laughing]
Okay, we're going to call for our second reception of visitors, this gives anyone in the audience an opportunity to address the board on any topic.
Nothing? How come it?
Hearing none? Communications and announcements? Lend?
Thank you, Dr. Kupka. We will have our next meeting this Friday, and Peggy Agnos, the Executive Director of Lend, has issued just a brief email to us this afternoon, basically giving, letting us know that there'll be a more in-depth update regarding the Conference Committee as it relates to pensions. So we should have a fairly lengthy report on Friday.
Okay. Thank you. Sessid?
We finished our negotiations with the certified staff, and they did approve the We finished our negotiations with the certified staff, and they did approve the contract, and the board will be, SACID board will be meeting Wednesday. I think we'll approve it, I'm hoping. So that's a good job done. It was very interesting, interest-based bargaining, which takes longer, but it's actually, it was very productive for us, and.
What is the interest-based?
It means that you are together all the time. You don't just go off in your separate rooms and caucus all the time, but you're together, and you talk about each other's interests, and you actually work them out together, and that's the time-consuming part. And for the most, it really was very constructive, because you really get to know each other. You're spending all these hours in the room together. And came out with a very, I think, a five-year contract, which will be, is very welcome, and pretty much in agreement with all of us. There were, not to say that there weren't some issues that were discussed very pointedly, shall I say, but it's, it is, it's a very interesting process. It was the first time I'd really been involved in the whole thing, 'cause we do it differently here. But I hope that I will have good things to report. I'm sure that the vote will be positive. And also, one of the issues with special ed, and I'm sure our special ed people are aware, is that, that the state of Illinois has, requires a certain class size for special ed classes. The national law does not. The ideal law does not require it. So there's been some discussion on the state level, state legislative level, and I guess at the state board too, for removing those class limits. And that was part of our issue with negotiating too. So we, I may have more to report, but there was, Mike Volpe, our executive director, was just at a board meeting for the special ed directors in Springfield, and they're still talking about it. If those class sizes are removed, those requirements are removed, then it will be very interesting to see what districts do with, with their newfound freedom, I guess. So those are the two biggest issues for SACID.
Do you have anything on the Illinois Humanities Council?
We did have a meeting in September, and one of the issues that the Humanities Council has been supporting is conversations on contemporary issues, business and humanities on BEZ, on the, on public radio. There's this past week, this past week, there was a special broadcast every day of something interesting, and they will be having another board meeting Thursday night at the WBEZ to celebrate this wonderful thing that they've done. It's nice to associate business with humanities. It isn't always done. So I hope, I'm not sure I'll be able to attend that meeting, but if I do, I'll certainly report on it to you.
Julia, what, what, what radio station is the WBEZ?
Oh, it's 91.5.
91.5.
Sorry.
NPR.
Yes, yeah. I listened to it in the car, actually.
Thank you.
But they're very, they're, they're very much supported by the Humanities Council. That's it.
Thank you. Terry, the 99 Education Foundation?
Yes, we had an alumni tent at both homecomings and at the North-South game, and I wanna thank Mike and Rick and Nancy for coming to the tent at one of the games, so I appreciate that, and it's nice. Our alumni really enjoyed talking with us, and especially the South homecoming just last Friday night, several of the alumni came up and said, wow, it's really nice that you recognize us.
Well, good.
That, this is the first time that they've had an opportunity to, to meet and chat with each other, and it was a very nice thing, so thank the schools for having the tent there and, and the weatherman for giving us halfway decent weather. It was a little chilly Friday night, but it was, all in all, a very successful event, so.
There were a large number of people involved in running that, too, setting up and standing there and talking to people, so.
Yeah, yeah. It was, it was very nice, very nice. And then we're, we're working on the pizza wars, which are, oh, I hope I get the right date, January 18th, or is it the 16th? The 18th, I believe. So be sure and put that down on your calendars, because that'll be really fun, 'cause it's at South High, so.
Start saving our Weight Watchers points.
Yes, there you go.
I'm sorry, I had to miss the homecoming at South Friday night.
Me too.
My daughter had a, I was going to go, as I told you, 'cause I missed the parade, and my, my daughter had a tennis tournament that I forgot about, and.
Gotta be there for the kids.
Yeah, but it was nippy out, wasn't it?
Yeah. Well, it was an indoor tennis tournament.
Oh, well then.
You're one to experience a nippy, but great to hear that the tent was well-attended there, and I know fostering those relationships with our alumni is something that, that we really wanted to do for, for our schools, so.
Well, it's important, because our alumni, they help us in many ways that we never see and never hear about, so it's really a wonderful.
And could help us so much more.
Yes.
Well, really.
Too.
I mean, seriously.
And it's not just monetary, it's, it's just.
Exactly.
It's the goodwill, and it's really a very important thing, so.
Community building as well, so, thank you for that work.
Okay, Deb, did you have anything else to add?
Only that, the DuPage Division meeting, did everybody respond to Joanne about the DuPage Division meeting? I think you did tonight, right?
I just, I just did this evening, yes.
Okay, all right.
Okay, we'll see you there. All right.